To Lincolnshire County Council Planning Regulation Committee. It's Monday the fifteenth of April, twenty twenty four, ten thirty a m. I'm councillor Ian Fleetwood, the chairman of the committee. To my immediate right, I have councillor Charlotte Vernon, who's my vice chairman. Around the room, we've got various committee members. And we have officers and a legal section in the centre, together with democratic services in the bear pit. We haven't, we, we are not expecting any fire alarms this morning, being, being Monday. They've already been tested, so if you hear a fire alarm, please leave the building to the rear of me and exit the front car park, where we'll hopefully camp for everybody. Similarly, if anybody wants water, it's to the rear of the room, so please help yourself. Otherwise, item one will be apologies for replacement members.
Thank you, chairman. We have apologies from councillor Carrington and councillor Hall.
Thank you very much. Item two is declarations of members' interests. Vice chairman?
Thank you, chairman. In relation to item six point one on the agenda, the application at South Wytham. I have been present at parish council meetings when this application has been discussed. However, have not expressed an opinion and come into this today with an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe yesterday or very recently, all members of the committee have been sent an email from a gentleman in the area. This has been forwarded to the planning officer, and I don't believe anybody's made any comment. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, chairman. With respect to item five point two, I am the county councillor. And when Janet ended, I did go on the visit with her to discuss the matter, but I'm not predetermined in any way and have an open mind with regards to the order as presented.
Thank you very much. So seeing nobody else wishing to indicate, I'll therefore move on here rapidly to minutes of the previous meeting, twelfth of February, previously circulated. You've had a chance to read them. I will propose them as a correct record. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor. See ya. All in favour? Excellent. Everyone's moving. That's great. Everyone's awake. Lovely. Item four then is notes of the site minute, a site visit held on the tenth of April. These were to follow. Sorry? Yes, they've been circulated this morning. As you know, we went for a site visit down to the bottom end of the county, so South Wytham last week. If you're happy to accept those, thank you. Lovely. I'll therefore move on to traffic items. Item five, which is, moving on to five point one, Lincoln Sewell Road, proposed no waiting at any time. So I'll go to Jan Gibson, please.
Thank you, chairman. So the first report today is for Lincoln Sewell Road. We had a request from a resident, next slide, please, for restrictions to manage parking in the vicinity of their access to their property. And we subsequently observed the site and noted that there was an issue and have proposed an extension to the existing double yellow lines as shown in blue on appendix A. We've received one objection based on the fact that we've taken the restrictions beyond the access and therefore there will be a loss of on-street parking. Our view is that this extra space is required to access safely these residential properties. It's therefore recommended that the objection is overruled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I don't believe the local member is online. She is online. I don't know. Would you like to comment, please, councillor Clark?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I am online. No, no comment at the moment. I'm just reserving the right to speak should there be any difficulty with it. I'm not anticipating it. I just want to thank the officers for working promptly and for bringing it to planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your brief comments. Very much appreciated. So, committee, would anybody like to speak to this? Councillor Ashton, please.
Move approval.
Well, that was brief. Councillor Skinner?
Very happy to second.
And councillor Clark, you're happy with that, I presume?
I am. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I've seen no further speakers. Proposed by councillor Ashton, seconded by councillor Skinner. All in favour, please show now. That is unanimous. Thank you. So therefore we'll move to five point two, which is Grasby, Vicarage Lane and Main Street, proposed waiting restrictions. Jan, please.
Thank you. So, next slide, please. We were approached by the parish council regarding issues of parking associated with the school at Grasby. Grasby is located on the A ten eighty-four between Caister and Brig. Next slide, please. Concerns related to obstruction of visibility at junctions and the flow of traffic and the tendency of the school bus to park on the school keep clear markings. To resolve these issues, we propose some sections of no waiting at any time at junctions and a dedicated bus bay, so that the bus has somewhere to park. As ordinarily, it turns up and there's no space for it. That's why it ends up on the school keep clear markings. We've had four objections. There were concerns about the displacement of parking into other areas causing further issues. There are also concerns that parking will be displaced to the south along Church Hill and parents and children will need to walk up Church Hill where there was no formal footway in place. There's also concern about the effect on people attending the church. In response, our view is that we're restricting parking where at any time it would potentially cause an issue and a hazard to highway users. Alternative parking is available on Main Street from where a footway is provided to the school. There's minimal impact on church visitors on the basis that most of church activity would happen at a time different from school start and finish times. And we therefore recommend that the objections are overruled. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Grasby fairly well in that until a few years ago, a couple of years ago, the late councillor Lewis Strange used to live just not too far away from this location. So I've spent quite a bit of time walking in this area with Lewis and doing bits and pieces. So I do know the village very well. Quite happy with the recommendation, so I'm quite happy to move it. Councillor Ashton, please.
Thank you. Could I just ask in respect of the existing advisory school keep clear markings, are we intending for that to remain advisory or is that going to become a proposed no waiting at any time?
The proposal is that they just remain as an advisory marking.
Which is really surprising that we're going to all of this trouble having a, having this paper before us to put in proposed no waiting at any time in other locations, putting a bus stand in with an eight a m. to four p m. We know the issues that are caused obviously by school parking, but immediately outside of the school, we're not taking the opportunity to make that existing advisory marking a mandatory one. I can just see problems down in the future should enforcement be required at, in, in, in order to back up the work that we're doing this morning. The one bit that won't be able to be enforced is the school advisory marking, where everyone living locally, the parish council and so on, will assume should be enforced. It's the one bit that we won't be able to, and I'd just like to know why. Given the issue that, that we have with school parking, why the opportunity hasn't been seized just to make that, upgrade that to enforceable while we're in the area, while we're doing all this work?
Thank you, councillor Ashton. I think apart from the bus using that marking, it is, it is well observed by parents. If we were to make it mandatory, we would need quite a sizable sign. So we're trying to balance the impact on the environment as well. But we can always revisit the area should there be a problem with that marking being ignored.
Yeah, I mean, just to come back, Mr Chairman, I think as a marker for ten on this, it just seemed to be a sensible thing to do while we have the opportunity to do it. And if it's going to require a big sign, I think, you know, if this is a concern for local people, surely they'd prefer to have, for the local community or the parish council, they'd rather have a big sign than a set of markings that we hope that most people will observe on the basis that we hope they think they'll be enforceable when we know that they're not. But I mean, I'm, I'm not too worried about making, you know, I don't want to make perfect the enemy of good, but I do think we're missing an opportunity.
Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, chairman. Just to clarify the point councillor Ashton made, the reason that's partly also been left is, Jan, myself, we were on-site, as it were, and we discussed this. And the parish council actually said to leave that in situ because they didn't feel it was warranted at this time to change it to a mandatory enforce, and they know full well it's not enforceable. And they felt that actually it was well observed and it wasn't required to be altered. And that this struck a balance between protecting the areas that needed to be protected and those that, when school isn't in, when the school isn't in use, there is no actual harm in somebody parking there should they need to, which is why there was a balance set. I'm quite happy to second the recommendation, chairman, as printed.
Thank you. Do I have any further speakers? Seeing none, and I don't think there's anything for Jan to respond to there. So I'll therefore offer it to the meeting proposed by myself, seconded by councillor Smith, that the recommendation as printed is granted. All in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Those against? Abstentions. Two abstentions. Okay, that one's therefore carried. Five point three is Sterton by Stowe, the A fifteen hundred, Martin Road, proposed puffing crossing facility. Back to you, Jan, please.
Thank you. So the puffing crossing, proposed at Sterton by Stowe, next slide, please, is one of several to be funded by the Community Crossings Initiative. The aim being to assist pedestrians, in this case across the A fifteen hundred in the centre of the village where it's near to its amenities. We've received thirty-seven formal objections to this proposal, along with a petition signed by five hundred and forty-nine people in opposition to the crossing on the basis of two main themes. The first being safety, people are concerned that the location of the crossing between the two junctions will create confusion for motorists, potential distraction for motorists, there's lots of turning manoeuvres going on, and ultimately be a danger to those using the crossing. They also believe it will create congestion in the area. The second main concern is the effect of the loss of on-street parking resulting from the crossing and the impact on local businesses. There's a fear that businesses might be lost, which would be very detrimental to the community. Many have requested that the funding allocated to this scheme is redirected to other measures to reduce speed through the village, which would make it safer for people to cross the road and also improve the local environment generally. Excuse me. We've also had twenty-seven emails and letters in support of the proposal. These believe that the crossing will improve safety for pedestrians, that its location is correct in that it reflects the desire line where most people cross. There have been concerns that parking in the area does obstruct the visibility of pedestrians using the informal crossing point now. And the, there's also a belief that the crossing will reduce the severance brought about by the A fifteen hundred, which splits the village in two, and the crossing will make it easier to navigate between the two halves. Further technical comments in the report. The funding allocated to this scheme can only be used for the crossing, so we would not be able to explore the other measures requested. In terms of safety, a road safety audit, although this identified the site relocation of the crossing, which has, for which the design has been amended, there are no other safety concerns identified in that audit. There will be new road servicing and signage associated with the installation. And the design of puffing crossings and zebras includes for the white zigzag markings. These are to ensure visibility of the crossing area is not obstructed by parked vehicles. They do restrict parking at all times but are mandatory. That concludes my summary. Thank you.
Within the meeting, we have visiting member councillor Bootroyd, who I believe would like to address the committee.
Thank you, chairman. As you, you might expect, I'm fully supportive of this crossing. I've lived and have lived in the village for a number of years until just recently. It's something that when I was on the parish council, we were very much fighting for. The crossing in this proposed location does have support from the parish council and does have support from the local school as well and, and many residents. I, I accept some of the, some of the comments about the location, but as, as stated, it is definitely on the desire line for pedestrians. It's where I've crossed the road for ten years or more to get to various facilities within the village. So fully supportive. You know, I've had letters from local residents, from one particular school child in support of this as well, which, you know, as councillors, you don't often get. So, you know, people of the community are taking the time to reach out and, and to say, you know, we're fully supportive of this. So obviously it's one of my top priorities for, for highways in my area. And hopefully we can support that today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I travel the A fifteen hundred on a fairly frequent basis, very frequent basis, on my journeys to Gainsborough and back. And I'm very aware of the facility there and the need. I can certainly see that on either side of the road, there is a convenience store and a co-op on either side. So it will give people the opportunity to visit either and also go potentially to the public house and other facilities in that area. So there's a variety of functions in that locale. I'm quite happy to move the recommendation. Councillor Skinner, please.
Very happy to second.
Mo, you should speak. Councillor Skisir?
I will support this. I think what you call puffing crossing, a wonderful thing. Because I managed to get one in May before people again did, but it's safe for the children and the public. It worked very well. So I think you need that one. Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Mrs Overton, please.
Thank you very much. I also like having crossings, I must say, but I don't know why the local member, excuse me, didn't, didn't suggest the same plan that was already proposed. Did the current member, did the, did your proposal have a different advantage to the one that the council had already considered? It sounded like there was a better, a technically better scheme available. But this one is one put forward from the local perspective, I think. Thank you.
I believe councillor Bootroyd would like to come back.
Yes, the, the original, I think it probably addressed a couple of things. Probably a couple of years ago, I'd met Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership to look at speeding and all sorts of things. And, and this was, this is the outcome of that meeting. We, unfortunately, when highway, I wasn't going to mention this, but seems councillor brought it up. When highways drew the first location, they drew it in the wrong place and put it out for public consultation. So it was ten metres right outside the store. So unfortunately, that, that got a lot of comments and support of the store, some of which, you know, were probably still standing today. So the location was redrawn, the application was re-put out, I understand. And it, it was, although we looked at a different location, the other side of High Street, it was decided that because of, because of the original, the original drop crossings that's there now, that's where people cross, that, that's the crossing desire line for, for people that are using the village. And people just wouldn't use it if we located it anywhere else. So that was the decision to, to, to put it where it was, which is, you know, we, we want to spend public money wisely. We decided there was no reason to, you know, no reason because it passed all the safety applications and everything else. There's no reason to put it anywhere else because that is the desire line for the crossing.
Okay, so this is the proposal on the table today. I'm quite happy to support it and propose it. Councillor Skinner is quite happy to second. I don't believe there's any questions or to be answered by Jan Gibson. So I'll therefore put it to the vote. All in favour, please show now. And that is not quite unanimous. Those against? Abstentions. One abstention. That is clearly carried. Thank you very much. So that's the traffic items done with. Thank you, Jan. I very much appreciate your attendance today. We'll now move to item six, county matters applications. And this takes us to six point one, S twenty-three, oblique fourteen seventy-two, South Wytham, where we went on a site visit a few days ago. Mr McBride?
Thank you, chairman. Good morning, councillors. Yeah, your service paper takes us to South Wytham. The application sought by G web Horridge is to vary condition five of a planning permission to allow tipper trucks parked overnight on the site to leave the quarry between the hours of oh six hundred and oh seven hundred. Obviously, the existing condition allows the vehicles to, to leave during the daytime and the application is seeking to extend that by one hour to start at oh six hundred hours. So councillors will recall that this application was brought to the committee back in November. And after some discussions at that meeting, the item was deferred to enable a site visit to take place and also the request of the committee for further information to be provided to examine the level of noise which would be associated with the extension of hours sought and whether that would constitute a harm to residential properties during that earlier period of time. The report before you today, so which is the supplementary report and the substantive report, which came to you in November, now includes that information in terms of the noise assessment was undertaken both by the council and also by the applicant themselves. And both, the council's noise report is attached as appendix C to the, to the papers. So as the chairman said, committee took a site visit on the tenth of April when you were able to look at the site and the surrounding area and to basically make a judgment on some of the matters that had been raised at the committee back in November. Just going through the presentation, so the plan of the application site is on the screen. And you recall that we stopped at the access point on Mill Lane to have a look at the area that is designated for overnight parking and for the route that the vehicles would take through the quarry and then to leave by the southern access on Wytham Road, which, as we discussed at the site visit, is actually within the boundary of Rutland. And the southern access is controlled by a different planning permission, one that was being granted by Rutland County Council. Let's just go through the, the rest of the slides, just as a, I suppose, as a reminder. So the next slide just gives a little bit more detail. As we saw during the site visit, that the, the main area where the actual vehicles are parked is largely now completed in terms of the extraction of material from that part of the site. And it's largely just now used for sort of other housekeeping and administration sort of purposes. And then the land further to the west is where the main quarrying activity actually takes place. And as was said on the site visit, vehicles actually are loaded in that other area. There's a waybridge there and then they drive back to the overnight parking area. And then the proposal is that they would leave from six a m. in the morning and basically follow the route through the site and then down the southern access on to Wytham Road and then to the A one. Next slide, please. So we've just got a couple of photographs, both at the northern end. So this is from the Mill Lane access points. Next slide, please. And again, from the same sort of position. Next slide, please. And then this is the southern access on to Wytham Road. And final slide. Final picture. Again, that's looking back to, to the village. And as we saw during the site visit, the closest residential property to that access is a hundred metres from the access point. So just bring you to the report. So the supplementary report sets out the findings of the noise report that was undertaken on behalf of the county council. And the conclusion of that report is that the movement of vehicles between six a m. and seven a m. from the overnight parking location through the quarry to the southern access would not contravene the night time noise level suggested by the M P P F, which is forty-two d b a. Conclusions of the noise report are that the movement of the vehicles in terms of them starting up and either leaving the northern access or driving through the quarry would not, the nearest residential property would not exceed that level of forty-two d b a. In terms of the southern access, whilst the noise report concluded that at the nearest noise property, the level reached would be at around forty-eight d b a. The condition imposed by Rutland County Council does not restrict the hours of movement for, for those vehicles, but only imposes a noise level of fifty d b a. And therefore, the conclusions of the report, of the noise report are that there wouldn't be any contravention of that noise, of that condition either. So both in terms of the access in Lincolnshire and the access in Rutland, there would be no contraventions of either the M P P F or the current planning permission imposed by Rutland County Council. And also, just as the chairman alluded to at the start of the meeting, a further representation has been made over the weekend by a local resident, which set out a number of concerns relating to the supplementary report, which in summary basically questioned the methodology of a noise assessment that's been undertaken, questioned the consistency of the use of the relevant paragraphs from the M P P F. And in terms of enforcement, suggested that more than, there's been more than one occasion when HGVs have left the site prior to seven a m. In terms of the methodology of the noise report, I think that we're more than, I'm more than content that the report has been undertaken by a fully, basically approved noise consultant who's represented the council on a number of occasions. And their advice has been examined through planning appeals and never to be found to be inconsistent with the relevant methodology. So my advice to you is that noise report has been undertaken completely in accordance with standards and it is a robust document that you can rely on. In terms of the M P P F, again, I think that the report does refer to the relevant paragraphs and is consistent in terms of what it says. And finally, with regard to enforcement, there might have been more than one occasion when vehicles have left the site before seven a m. We haven't got any detail of that. And you'll see in the report that an enforcement officer did actually visit the site unannounced prior to seven a m. and did not see any vehicles leave the site before that time of seven a m. So we can't confirm whether there has been other vehicles leaving prior to seven a m. So bringing it all together, the recommendation is that planning permission be granted subject to the twenty-four conditions set out in the report on page, the right page, so the, started at page forty-nine and going through to page fifty-four.
Thank you, Mr McBride. I think it goes without saying that the site visit was pretty well attended. So I think that only those So I think that only those people that were on the site visit and inform information should really be voting on this application. I'm going to go with, first of all, the vice chairman, Charlotte Vernon. councillor Charlotte Vernon.
Thank you, Chairman. So as members may recall, this sits within my division. We've had a number of representations received objecting to this application. And as I mentioned last time, if this is approved, it will be one of only two quarries in Lincolnshire allowed to start movements at 6:00 AM. After the site visit and today, I remain gravely concerned about this. And if we have to condition movements to be a maximum of eight, I don't really understand why we're saying that eight is okay, but nine isn't. I also think as well as being difficult to enforce it specifically being eight, we need to be thinking about the potential that the applicant may submit an application for further movements or indeed all movements to begin at 6:00 AM in the future, although obviously conscious we can't sort of really look at that today because we have to consider what's in front of us. And I remain sort of gravely concerned about the precedent this is setting across Lincolnshire. We have a number of quarries that I'm sure will be watching this application with interest. And again, I know that each case on its own merits. But it does concern me that if we're considering that this is acceptable for a 6:00 AM start, then others may well put in an application for that too. When we went to the site, one of the members asked a question of the applicant. And I understand the reason for this is so that they can get ahead of the traffic and get more loads in during the working day. I think every quarry would be grateful for that opportunity. And I think to treat South Witham as an exception is a grave risk. And I'm sure that sort of many other applications will be forthcoming. I'm still disappointed that the applicant has not engaged with the parish council or local residents, and I hope that they may listen to this and do that in the future. I appreciate it isn't mandatory, but I do think it promotes goodwill on both sides to do that. And a better relation between the operation and the villages could only be a good thing. NPPF Para 8185, ensuring development is appropriate for its location. I just can't agree that this change is appropriate for this location. We talk in the report and it states that an unannounced visit took place before seven and staff were already on site, albeit movements weren't taking place. I think if you're looking to push that start time back from seven to six, staff are likely to be on site from 5:00 AM doing vehicle checks and whatnot for their 6:00 AM departure. We're in the spring now, but I know in the winter that will be possibly defrosting vehicles and more noise for local residents. And I also still believe that the inspector's appeal decision for Dunston Quarry, where they concluded that 7:00 AM was an early enough start, is relevant to this application. We've obviously had a copy of the applicant's noise assessment and at sort of our own Blue Tree conclude, there are various obvious errors in the report that the applicant provided, which is disappointing. Blue Tree state that it's possible that HGV movements were occurring before 7:00 AM. And that's an example that the applicant is already possibly breaching the terms of their existing permission. Page 79 of the noise assessment report Para 4.13, HGV door slams, bleepers, et cetera, are not considered in the noise assessment and could generate significant sound. My question would be to members, would you want eight HGVs getting ready to depart at 6:00 AM or earlier close to your property? On page 94, the assessment might understate the impact of activity in the overnight parking area. I know this isn't within our remit, but I can't understand why the vehicles couldn't park on the other side of the quarry, which members viewed on the site visit. All documentation in planning guidance and all other guidance refers to normal working hours as being 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And I can't see why we would need to differ that and go for a 6:00 AM start at this particular quarry. So in conclusion, although I'll obviously listen to the debate and I have yet to make my mind up, I really do feel minded at this stage to vote to refuse this on the grounds of it being contrary to NPPF Para 185 and also the grounds of the worrying precedent it may set for two other quarries as well. One thing I would add sort of as well is that if members are minded to approve and if we look towards an approval, I know that the applicant stated that they would accept a condition that the Mill Lane entrance should not be used before 7:00 AM. And in my view, if members do look to vote to approve that application, I would consider that condition to be absolutely essential addition. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to go straight back to Mr McBride because there's a lot of detail there. And if there's anything you'd like to comment on.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just, I suppose just a couple of things. I suppose as we identified in the original report, that, and as councillor Vernon said, that each application has to be treated on its merits. Just because other quarries don't start at 7:00 AM, it doesn't mean then that that's a sort of restriction for every quarry to work on that basis. I think what we did after listening to the debate at the last committee was to basically instruct for a noise assessment to be undertaken, to look at whether there was any harm if vehicles did leave the site from 6:00 AM. And the noise assessment has come back and concluded that there wouldn't be any harm to local residents from movements at that time of day. So I suppose it's looking at why we wouldn't grant permission in terms of what would be the reasons for not doing so in this case. And the evidence has been provided, which shows that vehicles can leave the site from 6:00 AM without causing any harm. And therefore, from a planning perspective, there's no reason why the condition shouldn't be changed as the applicant has put forward. In terms of the number of vehicles, the applicant said that they basically would need eight vehicles to leave within that period of time. And that's why the assessment has worked on that basis. And that, again, the condition would be in place, which would restrict the number of vehicles to only eight. So they couldn't go above that. And that's what the noise assessment has been undertaken on that basis. So if they wanted in the future potentially to increase that number, then they would have to come back again with another sort of noise assessment to show what additional vehicle movements and whether that would cause any additional harm and what's currently been projected and assessed. So I think those are the sort of main points that I would come back to at this stage.
Okay, councillor Ashton.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Like many members of the committee, when this application first came before us, we did indeed have significant concerns on the impact of the local amenity of the communities in Thistleton and in South Witham. And I was really grateful of the opportunity to go on that site visit, to sit on the bus, to look at the roads, the access roads, and the route that this material would take and understand the relationship between the quarry site, the vehicle parking area and the settlement of South Witham. And I fully appreciate the concerns that councillor Vernon raises in respect of the precedent that this sets. And I fully hear the argument that why only, you know, if eight's acceptable on future applications, where do we end up, both here and on other sites? But mindful as I am that we have to take the application that we have before us. I am satisfied having been to see that site, having been to see the route which these vehicles take off-site, which is via Witham Road, which is via Streton Road to the A1, which takes the material far away. The route is as far away from South Witham as you can possibly get it. It doesn't go through Thistleton. It, you know, it takes the most rural possible route to get onto the main highway network, which I think is significant and significantly material here. If this traffic was being routed, for example, through a village, through a settlement, then my view would be substantially different. And I don't know how many quarry sites there are around Lincolnshire where the route to the main highway network is as remote and as rural and as unimpactful, perhaps, as what this is. I hear the arguments in respect of where these vehicles are parking and it would, I agree, be much more ideal if they were parked up further away from South Witham overnight. But they are still over a quarter of a mile distant from the settlement. And I don't, and I am minded to accept the conclusions of the noise assessments. Again, it's really good to see that this has been done as thoroughly as what it has. Because I wouldn't be happy making this decision without that information being robust. But I am satisfied that the noise assessments that have been done on this site and this application are robust and give me confidence that the neighbourhood amenity of South Witham and also the community over the border in Rutland will not be adversely impacted by this application. That amenity may be adversely impacted by HGV movements to and from other sites. HGVs can rattle up and down that road, literally to any other part of Lincolnshire as which they wish. They simply cannot access this particular quarry via that route at this time. And I would be minded, Mr Chairman, to move for approval with the addition of that suggested condition that Mill Lane access is not used before 7:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from Mr McBride now? Okay. So anybody else on the site visit wish to comment? You're very quiet this morning. I was on the site visit and I went around the block and viewed everything. Obviously, the site is to the west of South Witham. So presumably, the potential noise that might be created may well follow the wind and follow into South Witham a little bit. There's 100 metres there. This is with regard to egress onto the highway and moving them across the site, not at this location, because the suggestion was the gates would be, the waybridge, et cetera, would not allow, be used at this location. My concern is with the vehicles. Would the vehicles be loaded the previous evening? Or would there be any other workings within that site? Can you answer that one for me, Mr McBride?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the vehicles would be loaded from that area to the west the evening before. And then they would be driven to that parking area and left overnight. And then the intention would be that first thing in the morning, the driver would get to the vehicle and drive it off the site without any other activity, other than obviously opening and closing the door and starting the, and starting the engine up.
Thank you for that clarity. So in essence, the compound is basically there. The vehicles will be sitting, waiting, fully laden and ready to go in the morning. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. May I just ask, sort of in the noise assessment, they do refer to the fact that if permission were granted, HGVs would possibly be using the southern road and literally waiting to leave the site at 6:00 AM. So the movements would be taking place before that, so that they are literally queued up, waiting to go. Can we add a condition on to prevent sort of that from happening? Or is it purely the leaving the site that we can condition for the 6:00 AM?
Yeah, I suppose it becomes a little bit complicated because there's two permissions. There's one that's obviously that's been under our control. And then there's another one for the actual, sort of, I don't know, 200, 300 metres of the access road in Rutland, which is under the control of Rutland County Council. So in theory, there would be nothing stopping vehicles, I suppose, parking on that southern access road prior to 6:00 AM. Because provided they didn't contravene the noise limit that's been put forward by Rutland. But any activity in Lincolnshire couldn't take place before 6:00 AM in the morning. So everything with it on the Lincolnshire side of the site boundary can only start from 6:00 AM until 1800 hours. And that's any activity that can take place in Lincolnshire at that time. But the Rutland permission isn't time restricted. So in theory, anything can take place for 24 hours along that access route.
Councillor Ashley Morris, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Obviously, I was on the site visit and I went and spoke along with councillor Vernon to one of the people on site. I was slightly surprised to find that one hour difference means they can do four loads rather than three. I don't quite know where he learned his maths. But it did seem that, or I would have thought, they could have perhaps rescheduled some of their closer or further deliveries so that the extra hour wasn't needed. And presumably, this extra hour, start at six o'clock, there's going to be no noise before that. Well, there is going to be, because most people, most crews are going to have to drive in. And they're going to start engines to get things warmed up, various. Leaving at six means starting sort of about half five. It's not necessarily, and that compounds exactly as been said. The next thing will be, oh, can we shuffle it a wee bit more? We seem to see this a lot with planning. This is our planning application. And then a couple of weeks later, oh, and we've just thought of this. And I do feel that perhaps, you know, I mean, businesses are businesses and they want to earn money. And they're providing jobs, they're providing all sorts, roadstone included. But this just seems like, I would have thought they could have perhaps nudged an extra half hour. He had a very pat reason for the reason they can't extend their day the other way. But I don't really see an hour's going to make a huge amount of difference. I'm really, I don't know quite where I am on this. Thank you very much.
Well, I think I'm going to refer this to Mr McBride again. But I think obviously the application wouldn't be here unless they wanted the additional hour. So, Mr McBride, any comment?
Yeah, and just a couple of things. I think, as you say, that they've obviously worked out their business plans and think that, and their routes, and decided that that extra hour will give them an ability to get to those markets that bit quicker because they won't be faced with the amount of congestion that they would be faced if they left at sort of 7:00 AM. So I think that's one of the things that they've looked at. But in terms of any activity before 6:00 AM, then that would be something that we could control. So if they started, if they were starting their engines at 5:30, then clearly that would be in breach of that, of the condition that restricts any sort of activity. So we could take control if they started, you know, started their vehicles up at 5:30 and things like that. So there is still an ability to control that sort of activity.
So just to be crystal clear on that, you could control them not being able to start movements on the site before 6:00 AM, i.e. avoiding the situation where they're all driving off through the quarry site at half past five to get to the other side of the site, ready to leave the site at 6:00 AM?
Yeah, so they wouldn't be allowed to start their vehicles and to leave that compound until 6:00 AM.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Nuttall, not them, sorry.
Thank you. I'm just worried as well about the actual drivers arriving at work. I mean, they're going to be coming on cars or bikes or whatever. They're going to be getting there 20 minutes before to get the cars, get the lorries started. And how do we, I mean, where I live is very, very quiet. And we hear every noise, especially, like you said, if the wind's in a different direction. And then the dogs start barking and animals are, and it does disturb people.
Yeah, I suppose in terms of the actual cars driving to the site, then obviously, you know, cars can drive up and down that road at any time. So there's no restriction on that. Once they're actually on the site itself, again, there would be very little activity that's allowed before 6:00 AM. So clearly, they can obviously perhaps get out of the car and then go into the compound and just do whatever things they need to do. But they won't be able to do anything outside of the site in terms of doing any operations until 6:00 AM. So they won't be able to start the vehicles or do anything else outside of the site until 6:00 AM. So again, that condition does sort of capture those sort of activities. And I'm sure that if vehicles were, you know, in cars sort of arriving at 5:30, then again, we would be questioning, you know, why they were doing that. And we would again potentially be able to restrict that so that they couldn't actually turn up to very much. right until 6am itself. So certainly wouldn't want them to be turning up very much earlier than that because the question would be what would they need to be doing before 6am? That would mean that they need to arrive before that, very much before that time.
Thank you. Right, so I have a proposal for the recommendation by councillor Ashton. He has moved the recommendation with an additional condition. Am I correct, councillor Ashton? And the additional condition was?
That the Mill Lane entrance would not be used before 7am.
I am quite happy to second that. I'm going to look to see if there is any alternate proposals.
Chair, I don't have an alternate proposal, but I want to sort of just be absolutely clear that we are voting on the fact that vehicles would not be started before 6am. And that there's the potential to restrict staff arrival if they are arriving way too early. Okay.
Yeah, so absolutely, the vehicles couldn't start before 6am. And if staff were to sort of arrive at the site very much before 6am, we would certainly want to know why they were doing that and that would be something we could control as well.
So you know what you'll be voting on. So the people on the site visit, all in favour of the recommendation, please show now. One, two, three, four, five. Those against, please show. Three, four. So that's close, but it's lost, I'm afraid. So therefore, that permission will be granted. Okay, so we'll therefore move on to the next application, which is 7.1, and this is the Theddlethorpe Gas Terminal. And this one might be, I don't know, this will be an interesting report. I'll leave it to the officers to tell us their views.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. This agenda item relates to a nationally significant infrastructure project for which an application has been made to the Secretary of State for a development consent order for the construction and operation of a carbon capture storage pipeline and its associated infrastructure known as the Viking CCS Pipeline. The council is a consultee in the development consent order process. We are not the determining authority, but we are required to provide our comments on the application to an examining authority, which is appointed by the Secretary of State, who will, following a six-month examination, make a recommendation to the Secretary of State as to whether that development consent order should be granted or not. The committee report at Appendix A sets out the comments proposed to be made on behalf of the council to the examining authority on the likely impacts of the development in a local impact report. The Viking CCS Pipeline proposal is a cross-country underground pipeline approximately 55.5 kilometres long that runs along the eastern part of Lincolnshire, which is shown on, the route which is shown on the slide on the screen. The pipeline would transport carbon dioxide between the Immingham industrial area on the south bank of the Humber Estuary to the former Theddlethorpe Gas Terminal on the Lincolnshire coast. The development site is linear in nature, it's approximately 32 kilometres of the pipeline, a block valve station, the Theddlethorpe facility, the southern compound and a dune isolation valve would be contained within Lincolnshire County Council's boundary. The remaining land within the order limits is within North Lincolnshire and East Lincolnshire Council's areas. Next slide, please. The route is separated into five sections. A short part of section two, approximately two kilometres, is located in West Lindsay District. The southern part of section three, sections four and five are in East Lindsay District and all within Lincolnshire County Council's administrative boundary. The majority of the pipeline route passes through open countryside. There are, however, a number of sensitive designations in this area. These are set out in more detail in the local impact report, however, the most significant of which are the Lincolnshire Wolds Area of Outstanding Natural Beauty, which is shown in yellow on the slide that you can see here, and the Humber Estuary Special Protection Area, which is shown in blue off the coast. A 2.34 kilometre section of pipeline is proposed in the AANOB, which you can just see sort of to the very north, northern corner of the yellow area on the slide. Next slide, please. The pipeline would have an external diameter of 24 inches and would be buried up to a maximum depth of 1.2 metres, a minimum depth, sorry, I apologise, a minimum depth of 1.2 metres. It would transport compressed carbon dioxide captured from the emitting Industries in the Immingham area via a proposed facility at Immingham to a facility at Theddlethorpe. And from there, it would connect into the existing Lincolnshire Offshore Gas Gathering System pipeline for 120 kilometres. And this is a schematic diagram here on the slide showing this route. The blue pipe is the offshore pipeline and it would then connect to a new 20 kilometre section of subsea pipeline. Next slide, please. This slide shows an overview of the carbon capture storage process that has been outlined in the development consent order application. The subsea pipeline would connect to offshore injection facilities that would permanently store the carbon dioxide in the Viking area under the North Sea in depleted gas reservoirs below the seabed. It's worth noting here, though, that the offshore marine elements of the proposed development are not part of the development consent order application that's been made and will be considered under a separate marine licensing consenting process. Next slide, please. This plan shows the southern end of the pipeline route and the locations of the above-ground infrastructure, which are in Lincolnshire County Council's area. This includes the block valve station at Louth Road in the north, to the north-east of Louth, the Theddlethorpe facility options where the pipeline would connect to the offshore pipeline. Two locations are currently proposed and they are shown in green on the plan. One option is located at the former Theddlethorpe Gas Terminal site and option two is on agricultural land to the west of the gas terminal site. The dune isolation valve is, sorry, could you go back one slide? Could you go back, sorry? Thank you. The dune isolation valve is in pink to the east of the Theddlethorpe site and the southern construction compound in orange, also on the plan to the south. Thank you, next slide. This shows an aerial image of the location of the Theddlethorpe facility and a visualization of what the above-ground development would look like. The option one site would occupy the northern part, which is roughly the top half of the former gas work site. This site has now been cleared of all its existing structures following the cessation of its use as a gas terminal in 2018. To the west of this site is the agricultural land where the option two site would be located. At this stage, the option one site at the gas terminal is the applicant's preferred site. However, the option two site is still being taken forward as an alternative at this stage. The Theddlethorpe facility would comprise of above-ground infrastructure required to connect the new pipeline into the existing offshore pipeline, and this would include a 25 metre high vent stack at this location. Next slide, please. This final slide just shows a visualization of what the Louth Road block valve station would comprise of. The block valve station would be used to isolate sections of the pipeline for maintenance purposes and in an emergency, and it too would have a local vent stack which would be up to four metres height. And the final image below is of the existing dune isolation valve that was associated with the existing offshore pipeline when the gas terminal was operational. And this is proposed to be replaced as part of the Viking CCS proposal. So that's the end of the slides. So turning to the local impact report and the impacts of the development, the topics areas that have been considered are set out from section seven in the local impact report at Appendix A and are summarized in the committee report from paragraph 11. The issues considered in the local impact report are not exhaustive, but it considers those impacts where the council has expertise and/or has an interest in that particular area. The potential impacts have been assessed against the relevant national planning policies for nationally significant infrastructure projects and also the local development plan policies. The local impact report identifies positive, neutral and negative effects that could arise as a result of the development at this stage. In terms of the principle of the development, the updated new national planning policy statement, EN1, that came into force in January this year, identifies an urgent need for new carbon capture storage infrastructure to support the transition to a net zero economy. The importance of CCS projects in achieving net zero is recognized in the new updated national planning policy statement. And it should also be noted that this type of development is considered to be a critically national priority infrastructure. In principle, this development could help meet targets for reducing carbon emissions and would offer significant positive impacts in terms of the transition and movement towards net zero. As such, it is considered to accord with the national planning policy statement and with the sustainable development objectives contained in the national planning policy framework and in local plan policies. There is also potential for this proposal to deliver biodiversity net gain, which is not currently mandatory for EnCIP proposals, and some limited economic benefits. These positive benefits will, however, need to be balanced by the examining authority appointed against any potential negative impacts. The local impact report sets out the likely issues and impacts that the council consider may arise from the construction and operation of the development. Whilst I don't propose to go through all the issues set out in the local impact report, indeed, our members have got the report and will be aware of them, but I would like just to highlight those that are considered to be most significant in terms of potential for negative impacts. There would be a modest loss of best and most versatile agricultural land, around two hectares, and this would apply should the option two site at Theddlethorpe be developed over the option one site. And this loss is not considered to accord with national and local planning policy. However, this could be avoided if the option one site is developed over option two. As such, the local impact report expresses the council's preference for the option one site. In respect of archaeology, we are satisfied with the evaluation that has been carried out to date and with the mitigation measures that are proposed. However, development of this nature would nevertheless have a negative impact on any buried heritage assets. There is also potential negative effects in respect of the production of waste, and whilst considered neutral at this stage, the potential future cumulative impact of development with other EnCIP projects that are coming forward should be kept under review. In conclusion, the CCS pipeline project by its nature would offer significant positive impacts in terms of climate change mitigation and the movement towards net zero and have positive benefits in terms of climate change mitigation, biodiversity net gain and have more limited socio-economic benefits. Whilst these potential benefits are recognized, there are also negative impacts which have been identified and these will need to be balanced against the positives, in particular the modest loss of BMV agricultural land and the impact on buried archaeology. However, officers are of the opinion that the benefits to be delivered from the development in terms of climate change mitigation are significant and as such, the DCO application should be supported, subject to necessary mitigations being secured through the development consent order to minimize the negative impacts that have been identified. The recommendation to the committee is therefore to approve the local impact report set out in Appendix A to the committee report and to be able to inform the examining authority in our written responses of the council's position as is set out in part B of the recommendation. Thank you.
Well done. Excellent presentation. Okay, committee, you have a feel for what's in front of you. It's an EnCIP project, so we are invited for comments. You can see the recommendations A and B. Councillor Smith, followed by councillor Seer.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got three questions, if I may. With respect to BMV, best, most versatile agricultural land, for those who are listening in, how do you reverse the damage done to what is a huge proportion of this land? Because there will be a pipeline that goes under this land and the applicant states that the land, the damage to this land can be reversed and that this will be conditioned. Well, how do we ensure that the reversing of this damage actually takes place? And if it's later found not to be able to take place, how can the case of the severe harms be mitigated and compensated? If the designed life of the assets within the DCO are for 20 years, yet it's expected to last for double that length of time, what works will be needed to be undertaken to ensure that the assets actually function as intended and what are we doing to prevent the, or can we say to the examining authority, to present, prevent the potential harms of this? Because there will be additional work that has to be done on those assets, Chairman, the local impact report makes that very clear. With my final point, Chairman, with the total best, most versatile agricultural land for this scheme alone being up to 467 hectares, notwithstanding the first point, Chairman, that the applicant maintains that most of this can be reversed and there can be, the harm can be mitigated, what is the cumulative impact across all other applications that are nationally significant infrastructure projects and other development consent orders across Lincolnshire? Because I would argue, Chairman, if even a modest loss of best, most versatile agricultural land could be significantly harmful, given the other EnCIPS that we know of and others coming on stream. Thank you, Chairman.
So I'm just going to pause for a moment and wait for the officers to come back. This isn't a rush, this is an important project.
Okay, thank you, Chair. In terms of the damage to best and most versatile agricultural land from the pipeline corridor itself, there is potential for impact on the quality of the agricultural land from the construction works. And this is proposed to be managed through good soil handling and management practices and to that extent, the application has a draft of an outline soil management plan contained within it. And that would be a requirement through, would potentially be a requirement through any development consent order granted by the Secretary of State, which the applicant would have to adhere to the practices contained within that management plan to ensure that any damage or deterioration of the quality of the soils was kept to an absolute minimum during the construction period. Equally, future works would similarly have the potential to degrade agricultural land if it meant further disturbance to the land. And I would anticipate that any outline soil management plan would also apply to any further works undertaken. But we could be, we could strengthen that position through the local impact report to make that clear, our position to the Secretary of State. In terms to the hectareage, I appreciate the report refers to circa 548 hectares of BMV land within the corridor. Not all of that corridor will be disturbed, it will be used for other activities. The amount to be disturbed through the construction phase, which is considered temporary and reversible through the reinstatement, is 21.9 hectares of grade two land and 135 hectares of grade three A land. But I appreciate that is still considerable amount of agricultural land and it will require compliance with those soil management, that soil management plan to make sure that there is no, the harm is minimized. In terms of cumulative impacts with other development, yes, we're all aware that this part of Lincolnshire, there are proposals coming forward for other EnCIP schemes. At this stage, the other EnCIP schemes are not as well advanced as this scheme. At this stage, the other EnCIP schemes are not as well advanced as this scheme. They're not the subject of an application yet to the Secretary of State. And whilst cumulative impacts of that is a significant thing to take account of, but the Secretary of State is required to consider cumulative impacts in relation to schemes that are already existing or consented. And I think in the Local Impact Report, as part of our comments on cumulative impacts, we are requesting that the examining authority and ultimately Secretary of State keep that under review as the proposals for the other schemes progress sort of further through their process. But at this stage, they are not far enough progressed for them to be able to be taken into account.
Thank you for your comments. Councillor Seer.
Thank you very much. I have a very question to ask. First, when I heard the last time you came to presentation about the carbon capsule, my question was, because they already proposed it to do with nuclear waste, and I asked, is it going to affect if you comment? You say you can work side by side. So I said, oh, that's good. But first, maybe carbon capsules stay the nuclear waste. Then gone away for a while and come back, and you decide to have two options. First, when they came to the council chamber, they showed me that 25 metre pipe would ever go in the sky. The site was supposed to be in gas terminal. But now you have another option to you, another half. What, that land belonged to National Case, but it's a farmland and the resident live there. And the pipeline, if you're going to go on that sink, it could go right bottom one mile resident. The people live there. If they're going to look up 25 metres, this thing point now in outside the window, and I'm not okay with that. Agricultural land, Suddersorp, is a farm area. So the gas terminal came here 40 years ago. When the Suddersorp finished in 2018, they would turn the land back to agriculture. But it didn't happen because the land belongs to National Case. I understand it's a brown side whatever, but it seemed very interesting. But my concern is why you want to look at Option 2? Where would you feel the farm near the people live? If you do that, I mean, you are going to, because you say you work side by side in the gas terminal. Now, now another Option 1, Option 2, it not work side by side in the gas terminal? You're going to move out bottom end of the gas terminal where the people live? So it's, I'm worried. I live in that village. Trust me, I live in that village. And my concern is, of course, it come from down south. People say, yes, we want to put it here. And if you put it in your bottom garden, to anybody in this country, include any government, anybody could be happy. 25 metres, thing point up in sky, in your bottom garden. So if you can go back and add, it's like you proposed the first time to go on to the gas terminal, because that were out the people way. But now you think option thing to put this in the bottom. You know, I think somehow it's, people who incidentally off it, people who not live there, not understand how the local and people in Suddersorp live. So peace, sing, and reconsist in the people of Lincolnshire and Suddersorp is very serious. You know, I mean, we need carbon capsule. Of course, I understand that. But you should go into gas terminal themselves. They even consistent to extend to the farm area. That's my concern and worry. And I spoke at the councillor and the resident of Suddersorp, Seer. Thank you.
Do you have a comment at all, please?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'd just like just to reiterate the point in the Local Impact Report that we are proposing to make representation to the examining authority that the Option 1 site at the former gas terminal, the council would prefer to see that site redeveloped over the use of agricultural land. And that is already set out in the Local Impact Report. I can't really offer any comments on the nuclear disposal proposal because that is obviously in very early stages of development. And whether they could be co-located is something for the landowner and the relative developers to determine between themselves whether they can be co-located.
Councillor Ashton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, just as a declaration, I'm the portfolio holder of planning at East Lincolnshire District Council, in which district this application sits. I have had no, passed no opinion on this. I had no interaction on this issue. So I'm quite happy to debate it freely and fairly here. Isn't it great to see redundant infrastructure from an industry that has, in effect, now been passed by in this part of Lincolnshire, being reused for what is cutting-edge technology and energy security and carbon reduction for the next century or so? This really does seem to be an application, an opportunity for this part of Lincolnshire to look to the future rather than simply the past. There seems at times to be an opinion abroad that somehow the government is going to pay for the highest level of sea defences all the way around the coast of England, when every council is making its own passionate point for why its bit deserves that extra protection, why its bit is special. And there's the view that somehow government should protect this particularly vulnerable part of the Lincolnshire coastline. This is perhaps the most vulnerable in terms of long-term impact of climate change, of sea level rise, of coastal erosion. But unless there is something of critical national importance sitting behind those sea defences, I don't fancy our chances of making that case comprehensively to get the level of protection that the local community at this location deserves and needs, without, as I say, there being something pretty big and spectacular alongside that local community to tick those boxes with the Environment Agency, to tick those boxes with the Treasury Green Book, and to absolutely guarantee the safety and long-term security of the Lincolnshire coast. Not just that, as I say, this is cutting-edge technology. This is the opportunity for high-end levels of employment, skilled employment in a part of the Lincolnshire coast, which I don't think anyone's under any illusion, struggles with deprivation, struggles with attracting that kind of employment, those kind of jobs, and that kind of investment. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm really not overly concerned about a couple of hectares of best and most versatile land. I'm not at all concerned about the impact of burying another pipeline under Lincolnshire, because if you look on Google Earth, as I just have been doing, if you look at where Trenton went through two or three years ago, I appreciate that was a cable, not a pipeline, but it's a very similar thing. It's a trench with something in it. If I look at those fields, you can barely, 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 barely just make the faintest line on one or two crops as to where that is, but there are significant lengths of it. You have really got to squint and really got to look, and it helps if you know where it went in the first place. So I am reasonably confident that using the methods of construction that we see in Lincolnshire on now quite a regular basis for this kind of thing, that that reinstatement will not have a long-term material impact on the quality of that land for agricultural use. And if the farmer happens to negotiate the re-draining of his fields into the bargain, then he may very well have a betterment. But that will, of course, be for individual landowners to negotiate. This really does seem to be the sort of thing that the community in that part of the world should be welcoming with open arms. It's not every day that national infrastructure of this scale and opportunity for a local area comes forward. It is refreshing that we're not looking at yet another solar farm in the 1200-acre category, which genuinely does have a massive land take, a massive impact on the character and feel for an area, and a massive impact on the open countryside. All things considered, I think this is brilliant. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd be very happy to move that the committee fully supports the report in front of us.
Any comments from the officer?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'm going to move on to Councillor Mrs. Overton, then come back to Councillor Seer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I do support the comments made about the solar industry, that we are suffering on our countryside in such a huge scale. So thank you for those comments. But on this one, I think it is very important that we look very closely and not, yes, you know, I understand the willingness to welcome it, but actually, we need to make really sure. One of the things about the best, most versatile land is that, of course, land that is Grade 3B and 3A is really hard to tell the difference. If you stand at a field, you will not be able to tell by looking at it whether it's 3A or 3B. They are both growing crops. And I think this is one of this rather artificial division is not particularly helpful to us. Because I think what we are concerned is about food security and about the protection of the character of our rural landscape. So I think, so it is worth looking not just at the different grades, but it's actually worth looking at the restoration of the land. And, you know, you did pick that up, and I think that is really critical. The soil management plan, I find it hard to imagine that putting a pipe in that part would have no impact. And I recognise the points made by Councillor Ashwell. But nevertheless, that is quite a big thing to do, and it does break the soil structure. And it's going to be, I would think, hundreds of years before it's recovered, I would imagine. But nevertheless, it is something that is very important to make sure is properly included. The other point is about how much carbon is produced in this big task, you know, in creating holes that deep and planting the pipes, putting the pipes in. You know, that's obviously considerable amount of carbon going to be produced in that process as well. And it makes me feel that we are very optimistic that just creating, you know, we can technologically solve our problems rather than using less. And I think, you know, we do need to, you know, as a policy, I think we do want to focus on using less as well. So I'd be quite interested in what their thoughts are, the production thoughts are, in not producing so much carbon in the production of this. My other thought is the alternatives, and this is where we come on to now. I'm still not exactly sure why it can't be a pipe laid at the bottom of the sea where it could become a substrate for other plants and animals to grow on, and therefore it might actually be useful, who knows? But they are putting it a minimal distance, and then the majority is on land. And I'm not quite clear on why we can't put that pipe on the seafloor as well instead as through, as, instead of driving significant holes through the land, which is clearly a very difficult and huge task. So in terms of the cumulative effects, I would like them to take into account more of the plans that are in place because planning is what we're supposed to be about. That means not waiting till they've actually done it or put the plans in and finalised everything. You know, the plan, the point of planning is to make preparations and to say, well, obviously, you know, we want you to put any kind of things in the sea rather than through the land if you can. We know what is the difference? Why is there not a sequential test there? So I'd be interested in if that could be looked at as well. And then lastly, if you had a 1% leak of carbon dioxide out of that store, or indeed out of the pipes on the way, how much carbon dioxide would that be? And what would be the impact? I remember when we were talking about the 8,000 cow dairy, we all thought, well, it's cows and it's a field, except they weren't in the field. But what really struck home was the, you saw the size of the thing. The impact became evident when we looked at a 1% leak in the pipes and how that would impact our water source. So I'm quite interested, if there's a 1% leak in the pipes or indeed from the storage, how much would that be? And what would be the impact? And how is that mitigated? Thank you.
So again, some detailed questions there. And if you have any comments.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councillor Overton. There's some quite technical questions in nature from yourself. I'll do my best to try and answer what I can here for you today. Just to go back to the question on the 3A, 3B land, I totally understand the comments around that. And I'll just come back to the point that the applicant has submitted its soil management plan and would be required through any development consent order to comply with that and put the land back into agricultural use. In terms of the carbon emissions during the construction, yes, there would be a carbon emission from the construction of this project. The applicant has provided a lifecycle greenhouse gas impact assessment and climate change resilience impact assessment as part of their proposal to cover the construction phase. I think the applicant does conclude and acknowledge that they do need to put mitigation and measures in place to bring that down to a minimum. And ultimately, it would be balanced against the significant benefits of the project in terms of what it will deliver and could deliver in terms of locking away carbon. But that carbon impact during construction is acknowledged in the application. Just to come back to the cumulative impacts question again, the Local Impact Report does raise concerns in it about the cumulative impact of this scheme with other EnCIP proposals that are coming forward. We are, that these representations will be made to the examining authority and ultimately on to the Secretary of State, should the examining authority take it through as an issue in their report. And we will, as an authority, we can continue to make those representations as part of the examining examination process. There will be other points in the process where we can make written submissions beyond this Local Impact Report. There are a number of other submission deadlines where we are able to respond to documents that have been submitted and questions that the examining authority may put to us. So we will continue with that. And as anything comes further in the process, we will make representation to that effect. But at this point, we have to take into account the Planning Inspector's guidance in terms of the assessment of cumulative impacts for EnCIPS. In terms of the leakage question, I'm afraid it's not one I could give an answer to today. I think this does stray into the marine elements of the development, which is not subject of this DCO application. We're only dealing with the land-based elements. I appreciate leakage could be a similar issue in terms of the land aspects, the pipeline asset, but it would be discharged to air. It is carbon dioxide. It would discharge to air. The marine elements are going to be covered by a different licensing process. There are other statutory consultees who are part of the development consent order process, such as the Health and Safety Executive and the Environment Agency. And I'm sure these are matters that those statutory bodies will be offering comments to the examining authority on, or the examining authority has the opportunity to ask those bodies of their opinions if they feel there's an issue around any of those topic areas. In terms of the routing of the pipeline, the applicant has chosen a land-based routing to connect into the existing infrastructure that already exists at Thedallthorpe. You'll be aware that the marine coastline does also have some sensitive diagnostic nations. So I can't offer any more comment on the choosing of the routing, but the applicant has chosen to make the land connection from Immingham down to Thedallthorpe.
Any comments? I'll go back to Councillor Neis here now. Hold on. Let's go back to Councillor Mrs. Overton first.
Thank you. Sorry, yes. Thank you very much. Good answers, which I know is best you could manage in the circumstance. I quite understand. Local benefits, you did talk about the impacts on the soil and the local people, local benefits to the communities and economic costs when you do get to look at. local benefits to the communities and economic costs when you do get to looking at the one percent leak. Thank you. On, obviously we have a shellfish industry and so on, thank you.
So, Noi, the floor's yours now.
Thank you, thank you very much, um, for letting me comment back. First of all, I, I sure, it really safe, because when the, you to be gas terminal for forty year, when the first came, from my understand, from my husband, they say, the local were concerned about the pile leak, going to be explosion and all that, for forty year, nothing happened. And it is safety, I understand it quite good, but the carbon capture, when the pipe come in, it be good, you will make sure, because this they high technology, it won't be illegal or anything. I can't think of that, okay? But for my concern, like I say, you should be, you, the, your main thing is to be in gas terminal, not other side, because, you know, you have to buy the, the farmland like no code day, they buy the farmland to lay the pipe gas now. But other thing is, everything who want to come to the Sidersorb side, it good, but everybody, other councillor, everybody looking at the same, oh, you can see the fence and all that, you got to be foot. Sidersorb never foot. In nineteen fifty-three, Skegnet, other, Maborsor, Sutton got footed, but not Sidersorb. Sidersorb never foot, because they have seen the fence for hundred year, for my remember, for my husband's family. So you cannot use that as a weapon to say you got to have that, so. And of course, I give with councillor Overton about our deep question about why not go on to the sea. But I have not seen again, but I want to make a sure then, if you can go back a sure then, it got to be on Sidersorb gas terminal side, not outside the gas terminal. Because the gas terminal, you see, National Gate, the old land, lie all along from gas terminal, lie down to the dome, to South Street, where naturally serve, they own that land. My point is, please not use that land, do you use the gas terminal? We got to go somewhere. I know the safety, I don't think it will legal or anything, because, you know, quite important. But the, my point is, Sidersorb never footed in nineteen fifty-four, fifty-three, so I can tell you that now. So please, you take that back to in charge, put it in the gas terminal themselves, not outside the gas terminal. That's all. Not, you know, I mean, the Sidersorb, Maborsor, it's a retired village and a holiday resort, okay? We even have a second year school, it be good, if you like, the local people will get a job or bring the job in for whatever, but don't use that kind of thing to sing, to bring it better for Sidersorb. So that's all, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, I think most of those points have already been covered, so we'll move on to councillor Murray next, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd like to welcome the application, I think it's a great contribution that the Lincolnshire can make towards a better environment, and I think the response and the recommendation is entirely appropriate, and happy to support.
You, councillor Ashton Morris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of small points. The Triton Knoll and Viking Way doodles went right through, very close to my own property. You wouldn't know now that even happened. It's been, I mean, most of the farmers were adequately compensated, and it's a very small price to pay, but looking on Google Earth, you can't see where those went. So the argument that it's going to cause havoc with farmland really doesn't hold water, as obviously Thedallthorpe didn't. But coastal defences nonetheless are, are a very valid point. And if they're actually defending something relevant, or more relevant, then, you know, I, I don't see we, we have any, any sort of argument with it. But one thing, I don't know if it's possible to actually go and have a look, because that does seem to be massively helpful with any planning application like this. Because it, it was a terrific help this week, actually looking at what we were talking about, and we're in the same boat again with this really. Or having, I mean, lived at, just up from Thedallthorpe for quite a while when I was first married, I can, I know roughly where I'm talking about, but not precisely, and it does make quite a difference. So I don't know if that's a possibility, but I'd like to propose we do.
Right, so you're proposing a site visit? So, I don't know, I don't know quite as far as the office is concerned, this is a consultation on a national document, so I don't know if a site visit would be, it potentially would be appropriate, I think.
Thank you, Chair. And this, this application, as you've just said, it is not an application we're making a decision on today. It's not a Town and Country Planning Act application. We are, we are, we are a consultee in this process, and we, we provide our comments in, in the prescribed form that the Planning Inspectorate requests of us in, in the form of a local impact report. I, I do totally get the point that seeing a site, it does sometimes help focus the mind on, on what you are considering. We do work within quite a prescribed timetable for development consent order process, and we do have a deadline for submission of the local impact report by the twenty-sixth of April. It's, it's not something I think we particularly would normally extend as part of the consultation process, but if it was something that members felt sort of strongly that they'd like to maybe visit some of the, the schemes that are under consideration, maybe that's something that could be given consideration, but I'm not sure it's relevant to, to the, the decision, to, to respond to with our comments in terms of the local impact report in front of you today.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I'd probably just echo that. I mean, the difficulty is that we are working to a tight timescale, because we're a consultee rather than a decision-maker, and obviously the applications that come to this committee, where we have a decision-maker, we are in control of that timetable, and therefore we've got an ability to delay the decision to go and do a site visit, where for this particular response, we, we need to have our comments made by, by next week. And obviously, if we did a site visit, then, and then brought it back to committee, that's going to be middle of May, and we're, we're going to then miss that, that cutoff point. But it's maybe something we can look at in the future, where other NCP projects, if, if the committee feel that they want to do a site visit before we make a decision on a local impact report, then perhaps something we need to do, obviously further in advance than obviously what's, what we're able to do for this particular one.
And so is why I said potentially it would be a good idea, but obviously with just a week to go, it wouldn't allow timescale with this particular one, but obviously with other NCP projects, it might be something for us to consider if it's deemed to be appropriate at that point. Okay, um, so I'm going to go back to councillor Murray and ask him, he was making comments with regard to the fact that he was very supportive. I didn't know if you were, you were seconding the proposal.
I've been seconded.
So I'm now going to go back to councillor Ashton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think you basically just covered it. I was just going to try and be helpful with those members that would appreciate, we're speaking about a site visit, fully appreciate the timescale for this application. There's no time for us to get a site visit in before we take a decision. But just picking up on that broader NCP stuff, as we move towards better weather, maybe there might be an opportunity for the committee to get a look at some of those projects that are in the pipeline, particularly for me, as I spoke in the debate on this, the impact of some of those large-scale solar applications. I think it'd be just useful to appreciate the Trent Valley and, and how that's going to look perhaps from both sides. But equally, given the obvious applications that may or may not come forward around Thedallthorpe and, and this application, it wouldn't be a bad idea, even after this consultation has concluded, assuming there may well be further stuff in the future to just understand the location, and also what is already there. Because if you drive that road, I've driven up, I know exactly where it is, I see it from Google Earth, I've driven that road before, but from the, from the road up to Thedallthorpe, it's not that obvious quite what's there, it's hidden a bit behind tree lines and stuff. And I fully appreciate that members won't perhaps fully appreciate that, but more than happy for us to take a decision on this today.
Good, right, so as far as, I think that's a comment for the office to go back and have a think about for future projects. Right, so with regard to this paper, we've got recommendation A and a recommendation B. It's an NCP project, you've been, you're fully briefed on that, you understand fully where we're going. It's been proposed by councillor Ashton that both these recommendations are taken forward. It's been seconded by councillor Murray. If you're in support of this, please show now. And that, I believe, is unanimous as far as the committee's concerned, lovely. Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to do a little bit of housekeeping there and do, do a little bit of a rewind. No? Rachel? Have you done a recount for me? No, yes. Explain to me your problem, if you have one. Right, can we just clarify on six point one? Noi, which way did you vote? Did you vote for or against? On the last application, did you vote for or against? Yes, you voted against. That, that's, that's all we need to know. So therefore it then becomes a chairman's casting vote.
Sorry.
And so therefore it would become a chairman's casting vote. And so therefore, no, we're not going to do it again, because councillor Pepper's now left the meeting, so we can't do that. So on the basis of that, if it was four-four, and it becomes a chairman's casting vote, it would then therefore need to be that I am consistent with the way I voted, which I voted for. It'd still be five-four, okay? Right, so if you're happy with that, lovely. Okay, right, so on that basis then, I think everybody, been a longer meeting than normal, but some important debates. Thank you all for your contributions and a safe journey home.